Are you ready? Okay, all right. Welcome to the, welcome to the March 12, 2024 Melbury City Council's special meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:34 PM. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Pappan.
Here.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman is excused.
Mayor Fung.
Here.
Four members of City Council are present.
Thank you so much. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
Vouch for allegiance.
By.
The United States of America.
The Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, would you please proceed with the presentation for the first item on the study session, update on the recycled water feasibility study?
Yes, thank you. Good evening to you, Mayor Fung, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. We can get right into it. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Bautista, for a few comments on this very important and informational study session on the status of our recycled water feasibility study. So, Mr. Bautista?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. Sam Bautista, your Director of Public Works and Engineering. So, in November of 2020, the city hired West Jost to prepare a recycled water feasibility study. And this study is to evaluate the feasibility of developing and implementing a recycled water program in the city to produce disinfected tertiary recycled water for unrestricted irrigation purposes, which would offset potable water demands of existing customers and projective future development. So, West Jost is very knowledgeable in the processes of the city's water pollution control plant. But, water pollution control plant understands the city's goal of providing recycled water. The study completed a feasibility study assessment, which involves identifying potential recycled water customers, defining total recycled water demands, exploring opportunities for regional partnerships, refining recycled water treatment facility recommendations, identifying a project that will provide a new alternative water source, water supply source for the city that helps improve the city's water supply reliability, and identifying a project that will reduce nutrient discharge to the San Francisco Bay. The study will serve as the city's fundamental document for future state and federal grants and low-interest loan opportunities. So, tonight, we do have West Jost's team here. We have Rodora Bjogden, Bonnie Robison, and Greg Chan. And we also have Catherine Geis, who is, will be attending virtually. So, with that, I will hand over the microphone to Rodora.
Good afternoon, Mayor Fung and City Councilmembers. As Sam said, I'm Rodora Bjogden with West Jost, and I'm the project manager for the update to the recycled water feasibility study. Together with my team, Bonnie Robison and Catherine Geis, will be providing an update to the study. At tonight's session, we will be presenting the drivers for recycled water for the city, potential recycled water demands, alternatives for distribution system, alternatives for treatment system, and we'll be opening up for discussions, and then we'll update you on next steps. At the end of the presentation, we will be seeking the City Council's input on your preferred project alternative, and along the way during the presentation, we'll pause to, for questions or discussions. Okay, so first, let's talk about the drivers for recycled water. Recycled water would provide the city water supply benefits. Right now, the city's sole source of water supply is imported into the region by San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, SFPUC. Recycled water would provide an alternative local supply for non-potable use. This would leave drinking water for its intended water use, for drinking and not for landscape irrigation. Recycled water would also provide benefits for the city's wastewater treatment plant. It would reduce discharge and nutrient loading in the bay, potentially provide credits for the city associated with nutrient loading as regulations evolve, and it could potentially offset the cost of nutrient removal treatment facilities in the future. And then another driver is that there's available state and federal funding for the project. Grants and low-interest loans are available to help communities address increased frequency of droughts and the changing climate. So, this feasibility study evaluates the city implementing a recycled water program. We identified potential recycled water customers, opportunities for regional partnership, how recycled water would improve the city's water supply reliability, and alternatives for an economically feasible project. This study is partially funded by the state water board in the amount of $150,000 in a recycled water planning grant. So, I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie, our project engineer, to discuss water demands. Bonnie?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Rodora said, I'm Bonnie Robison, project engineer. So, one of the first steps, as we looked at the feasibility assessment for recycled water, was evaluating existing demands within the city. Start with, we looked at existing irrigation demands within the city focused on existing irrigation customers, as well as some specific identified development areas that are anticipated to include recycled water as they move forward. This yielded a total average day demand of 170,000 gallons per day, and included key customers like the Green Hills Country Club, which is the large red dot on the screen there, many schools and parks within the city, which are a lot of those green and yellow points on the map, as well as key commercial developments along El Camino Real, and additional multifamily development irrigation use. Yes.
If you just can't give us sort of a highlight for non-drinking water use, what do they include?
Yes, yes. Really, we are focused on irrigation use at this point for existing customers. There could be potential for other uses within those active development areas, but really at this point, the focus is irrigation demands. And then, yeah, I'm just going to go back over to Rodora for some potential regional partnerships.
One of the things that we also looked at is maybe indoor water use, flushing toilets in like multifamily buildings, those kinds of things. We did not look at making drinking water from recycled water. That's additional treatment that we weren't considering at this time. So, one of the tasks associated with this study is looking at potential partnerships in the region. For many communities, regional partnerships help reduce costs and distribute the benefits for recycled water. It also helps projects more appealing for external funding. So, having a more regional effort allows you to expand funding opportunities. Here, we present the entities that city staff and West Jost contacted to assess their interest and potential recycled water demands for non-potable use. The cities of Burlingame and San Bruno showed that there would be demands that could be met with recycled water. And while they're interested, funding's an issue for them also. So, a regional partnership bringing them along would be helpful for the region. Caltrans is interested in recycled water for irrigation along the freeway, and they would be a potential recycled water customer for the city. The other entities, South San Francisco, San Francisco International Airport, and San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, have interest in recycled water, but the potential for partnership is not feasible at this time. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Bonnie, who will talk about how we will bring recycled water to potential customers.
So, the decision, based on that information, on existing users, as well as those potential partnerships, the decision was made to focus specifically on demands internal to the city at this time, but leave the flexibility open in how we design the conceptual system, such that if Burlingame or San Bruno were interested in pursuing more of a partnership in the future, the city would not have closed off that opportunity. So, as we start here with this map of the conceptual distribution system, this was designed to reach those existing customers and key of future development. We've divided the system into two main phases. The first phase, shown in green, connects those areas with a high concentration of customers, as well as those high-demand users like the country club. Phase one would serve 80% of the city's existing irrigation demands. Phase two, in four separate areas, would extend to remaining locations at higher elevations within the city, and reach a majority of the remaining users. You will note, there are a few users over here in the west of the city that have been excluded from this conceptual system. They represent about 1% of the city's overall irrigation demand, but it's been identified, based on how distant they are from other uses, that it would not be cost-effective for the city to serve those locations. As we look at the overall system, as we've laid it out, the distribution system would begin at the water pollution control plant to the east, and then extend across Highway 101 to a new treated recycled water tank and pump station that would be needed to supply water to the city. This has been identified as a conceptual placement at an existing city-owned property. And to note, all of these pipeline layouts and the tank locations, it's a conceptual idea that would work. The city can certainly reassess locations as the project moves forward, and specific, you know, recycled water users decide to come on board or not connect. As we look in phase one in a little more detail, once the pipeline is brought across Highway 101, there's a 12-inch line that would extend up to the country club, as well as along El Camino Real. We have evaluated two alternatives for crossing the highway, either along Hillcrest or California Drive. Both of those alternatives end up very similar in cost, so the recommendation is that the city evaluate those further as in coordination with other CIP projects to potentially realize some cost sharing. Phase two has four separate areas, 2A through D. Each of those separate areas would require an additional pump station and tank to serve those locations as they're at higher elevations. As we then look at the specific demands and costs here for each of those phases, you'll see that the total demands are about 167,000 gallons per day for all four phases, or all five phases. Once again, that's that small percentage compared to the city's overall demand that has been deemed not cost-effective for the city to serve. The, once we've identified the average day demand, we've estimated the maximum day demand. This represents the peak usage during the summer when irrigation is at its max, and that's what the system overall needs to be able to supply. That reaches about 418,000 gallons per day. The total capital cost for the highway crossing, tanks, pump stations, all of these lines, has been estimated at about $29.9 million for the distribution system. As you'll note, phase one is the majority of that cost, $24.8 million, which is still roughly about 80% of the overall cost, in line with the overall demands. So, now that we've identified the total amount of demand that we could expect to serve, that the city could expect to serve, take a look at where that recycled water supply would fit in the city's overall picture of water supply. What you'll see here is the city's projected water demand in red, which is from the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which projects increased water demand up to 1,170 million gallons in 2045. As Rodora mentioned earlier, the city's solely dependent on water purchased from SFPUC, and that water supply is shown in blue here, specifically for the worst dry year in a multiple-year drought. As you'll see, that's projected to increase some over the years, but not in keeping with the city's overall demand. The supply deficit is noted there in those yellow markers, which would range from 9% up to 24% in 2045. That would be what would be expected to be conserved or met through other means in order to stay within that available supply. When we add in recycled water, though, the picture looks a little bit better. The recycled water shown in purple there decreases that supply deficit over those future years. Once recycled water is shown, brought online here in 2030, the deficit would range from 4% up to 18%, which is a more reasonable number to potentially ask customers to conserve, and is things that the city has requested already under that 20% mark. So, the recycled water would help the city's supply be a little bit more resilient. One note to make is that this recycled water is based on those projected existing demands within the city. There could potentially be more recycled water supply available if there are additional demands identified. So, in light of all that information, we've considered three main approaches for the distribution system, which are based on combinations of those different phases. The city could choose to move forward with phase one only, and meet 80% of those demands, a single zone, you know, keep the pump and infrastructure a little more simple. They could choose to do phase one and 2D. 2D is over by Bayfront Park, and has a relatively high demand with a limited amount of pipeline. It would be a good return on that investment. Or could proceed with planning on all of phase one and two, meaning, you know, 99% of the city's existing recycled water demands, or irrigation demands. If that's the approach chosen, we would recommend constructing phase one first, and then constructing each of those phases in phase two individually, as other projects may happen in the area, or as demands increase. In the table here, we've identified those three alternatives. Annual water supply ranges from 156 to 190 acre-feet per year. The percent of potable demand offset would just range from 7% to 9%, and the capital costs in 2023 would range from $24.8 million to $29.9 million. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions, comments on the distribution system portion of this.
Questions from the council, comments for our consultant?
I'm happy for other councilmembers to go. I do have a set, and then I do, I talked to staff, and thank you, staff, for the time earlier today. I'm our Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency member, and I can't call myself a new timer because it's my 14th month. But, my perspective on this is going to be long-term and across climate resiliency categories. So, I know that I've been told, try to keep it simple, so I don't want to confuse councilmembers until I hear their questions, and then how this fits to me in the much bigger picture of saltwater intrusion, and soil collapse, and fire prevention by maintaining healthy fire-resistant plants to keep us more resilient to fire danger. So, I see this as one part of a greater picture on that, and that's going to make life complicated. So, I don't want to complicate things. Mayor, if others could go, and then I'll add mine in.
Okay. Councilmember Cahalan and Councilmember Pappan, if you have any questions and comment for our consultant, go ahead. Ms. Pappan?
Okay, thank you. I see part of the structure that's anticipated goes down El Camino Real.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have plans for El Camino Real, and don't want to repeat disruptions. So, is that part of this plan?
We have not, at this point, that is a conceptual thing. We are certainly recommending that any development of those be done in conjunction with the city's existing plans. We totally understand that you don't want to tear up a street twice. Yeah.
Definitely want to keep efficiencies.
Yes, yes.
In addition to that, where I didn't see any reference to Caltrans, because we'll have to deal with them in this process.
Yes. So, Caltrans would be a retail customer?
Yeah, you said that. Do we sell them water already? I guess that was my question.
I don't believe that we have a meter for Caltrans at this point in time.
Caltrans.
Yeah.
No meter means?
We don't sell water to them at this point in time.
How do they get water?
Well, I don't know for sure, but I don't think they have access to recycle water. Bonnie?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Rodora said, I'm Bonnie Robison, project engineer. So, one of the first steps, as we looked at the feasibility assessment for recycled water, was evaluating existing demands within the city. Start with, we looked at existing irrigation demands within the city focused on existing irrigation customers, as well as some specific identified development areas that are anticipated to include recycled water as they move forward. This yielded a total average day demand of 170,000 gallons per day, and included key customers like the Green Hills Country Club, which is the large red dot on the screen there, many schools and parks within the city, which are a lot of those green and yellow points on the map, as well as key commercial developments along El Camino Real, and additional multifamily development irrigation use. Yes.
If you just can't give us sort of a highlight for non-drinking water use, what do they include?
Yes, yes. Really, we are focused on irrigation use at this point for existing customers. There could be potential for other uses within those active development areas, but really at this point, the focus is irrigation demands. And then, yeah, I'm just going to go back over to Rodora for some potential regional partnerships.
One of the things that we also looked at is maybe indoor water use, flushing toilets in like multifamily buildings, those kinds of things. We did not look at making drinking water from recycled water. That's additional treatment that we weren't considering at this time. So, one of the tasks associated with this study is looking at potential partnerships in the region. For many communities, regional partnerships help reduce costs and distribute the benefits for recycled water. It also helps projects more appealing for external funding. So, having a more regional effort allows you to expand funding opportunities. Here, we present the entities that city staff and West Jost contacted to assess their interest and potential recycled water demands for non-potable use. The cities of Burlingame and San Bruno showed that there would be demands that could be met with recycled water. And while they're interested, funding's an issue for them also. So, a regional partnership bringing them along would be helpful for the region. Caltrans is interested in recycled water for irrigation along the freeway, and they would be a potential recycled water customer for the city. The other entities, South San Francisco, San Francisco International Airport, and San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, have interest in recycled water, but the potential for partnership is not feasible at this time. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Bonnie, who will talk about how we will bring recycled water to potential customers.
So, the decision, based on that information, on existing users, as well as those potential partnerships, the decision was made to focus specifically on demands internal to the city at this time, but leave the flexibility open in how we design the conceptual system, such that if Burlingame or San Bruno were interested in pursuing more of a partnership in the future, the city would not have closed off that opportunity. So, as we start here with this map of the conceptual distribution system, this was designed to reach those existing customers and key of future development. We've divided the system into two main phases. The first phase, shown in green, connects those areas with a high concentration of customers, as well as those high-demand users like the country club. The phase one would serve 80% of the city's existing irrigation demands. Phase two, in four separate areas, would extend to remaining locations at higher elevations within the city, and reach a majority of the remaining users. You will note, there are a few users over here in the west of the city that have been excluded from this conceptual system. They represent about 1% of the city's overall irrigation demand, but it's been identified, based on how distant they are from other uses, that it would not be cost-effective for the city to serve those locations. As we look at the overall system, as we've laid it out, the distribution system would begin at the water pollution control plant to the east, and then extend across Highway 101 to a new treated recycled water tank and pump station that would be needed to supply water to the city. This has been identified as a conceptual placement at an existing city-owned property. And to note, all of these pipeline layouts and the tank locations, it's a conceptual idea that would work. The city can certainly reassess locations as the project moves forward, and specific, you know, recycled water users decide to come on board or not connect. As we look in phase one in a little more detail, once the pipeline is brought across Highway 101, there's a 12-inch line that would extend up to the country club, as well as along El Camino Real. We have evaluated two alternatives for crossing the highway, either along Hillcrest or California Drive. Both of those alternatives end up very similar in cost, so the recommendation is that the city evaluate those further as in coordination with other CIP projects to potentially realize some cost sharing. Phase two has four separate areas, 2A through D. Each of those separate areas would require an additional pump station and tank to serve those locations as they're at higher elevations. As we then look at the specific demands and costs here for each of those phases, you'll see that the total demands are about 167,000 gallons per day for all four phases, or all five phases. Once again, that's that small percentage compared to the city's overall demand that has been deemed not cost-effective for the city to serve. The, once we've identified the average day demand, we've estimated the maximum day demand. This represents the peak usage during the summer when irrigation is at its max, and that's what the system overall needs to be able to supply. That reaches about 418,000 gallons per day. The total capital cost for the highway crossing, tanks, pump stations, all of these lines, has been estimated at about $29.9 million for the distribution system. As you'll note, phase one is the majority of that cost, $24.8 million, which is still roughly about 80% of the overall cost, in line with the overall demands. So, now that we've identified the total amount of demand that we could expect to serve, that the city could expect to serve, take a look at where that recycled water supply would fit in the city's overall picture of water supply. What you'll see here is the city's projected water demand in red, which is from the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which projects increased water demand up to 1,170 million gallons in 2045. As Rodora mentioned earlier, the city's solely dependent on water purchased from SFPUC, and that water supply is shown in blue here, specifically for the worst dry year in a multiple-year drought. As you'll see, that's projected to increase some over the years, but not in keeping with the city's overall demand. The supply deficit is noted there in those yellow markers, which would range from 9% up to 24% in 2045. That would be what would be expected to be conserved or met through other means in order to stay within that available supply. When we add in recycled water, though, the picture looks a little bit better. The recycled water shown in purple there decreases that supply deficit over those future years. Once recycled water is shown, brought online here in 2030, the deficit would range from 4% up to 18%, which is a more reasonable number to potentially ask customers to conserve, and is things that the city has requested already under that 20% mark. So, the recycled water would help the city's supply be a little bit more resilient. One note to make is that this recycled water is based on those projected existing demands within the city. There could potentially be more recycled water supply available if there are additional demands identified. So, in light of all that information, we've considered three main approaches for the distribution system, which are based on combinations of those different phases. The city could choose to move forward with phase one only, and meet 80% of those demands, a single zone, you know, keep the pump and infrastructure a little more simple. They could choose to do phase one and 2D. 2D is over by Bayfront Park, and has a relatively high demand with a limited amount of pipeline. It would be a good return on that investment. Or could proceed with planning on all of phase one and two, meaning, you know, 99% of the city's existing recycled water demands, or irrigation demands. If that's the approach chosen, we would recommend constructing phase one first, and then constructing each of those phases in phase two individually, as other projects may happen in the area, or as demands increase. In the table here, we've identified those three alternatives. Annual water supply ranges from 156 to 190 acre-feet per year. The percent of potable demand offset would just range from 7% to 9%, and the capital costs in 2023 would range from $24.8 million to $29.9 million. So, with that, I will open it up to any questions, comments on the distribution system portion of this.
Questions from the council, comments for our consultant?
I'm happy for other councilmembers to go. I do have a set, and then I do, I talked to staff, and thank you, staff, for the time earlier today. I'm our Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency member, and I can't call myself a new timer because it's my 14th month. But, my perspective on this is going to be long-term and across climate resiliency categories. So, I know that I've been told, try to keep it simple, so I don't want to confuse councilmembers until I hear their questions, and then how this fits to me in the much bigger picture of saltwater intrusion, and soil collapse, and fire prevention by maintaining healthy fire-resistant plants to keep us more resilient to fire danger. So, I see this as one part of a greater picture on that, and that's going to make life complicated. So, I don't want to complicate things. Mayor, if others could go, and then I'll add mine in.
Okay. Councilmember Cahalan and Councilmember Pappan, if you have any questions and comment for our consultant, go ahead. Ms. Pappan?
Okay, thank you. I see part of the structure that's anticipated goes down El Camino Real.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have plans for El Camino Real, and don't want to repeat disruptions. So, is that part of this plan?
We have not, at this point, that is a conceptual thing. We are certainly recommending that any development of those be done in conjunction with the city's existing plans. We totally understand that you don't want to tear up a street twice.
Yeah. We definitely want to keep efficiencies.
Yes, yes.
In addition to that, where I didn't see any reference to Caltrans, because we'll have to deal with them in this process.
Yes. So, Caltrans would be a retail customer?
Yeah, you said that. Do we sell them water already? I guess that was my question.
I don't believe that we have a meter for Caltrans at this point in time.
Caltrans.
Caltrans, yeah.
No meter means?
We don't sell water to them at this point in time.
How do they get water?
Well, I don't know for sure, but I don't think they have access to recycle water. Bonnie?
concentration of customers as well as those high demand users like the country club. The phase one would serve 80% of the city's existing irrigation demands. Phase two in four separate areas would extend to remaining locations at higher elevations within the city and reach a majority of the remaining users. You will note there are a few users over here in the west of the city that have been excluded from this conceptual system. They represent about 1% of the city's overall irrigation demand, but it's been identified based on how distant they are from other uses that it would not be cost effective for the city to serve those locations. As we look at the overall system, as we've laid it out, the distribution system would begin at the water pollution control plant to the east and then extend across Highway 101 to a new treated recycled water tank and pump station that would be needed to supply water to the city. This has been identified as a conceptual placement at an existing city owned property. And to note, all of these pipeline layouts and the tank locations, it's a conceptual idea that would work. The city can certainly reassess locations as the project moves forward and specific, you know, recycled water users decide to come on board or not connect. As we look in phase one in a little more detail, once the pipeline is brought across Highway 101, there's a 12 inch line that would extend up to the country club as well as along El Camino Real. We have evaluated two alternatives for crossing the highway, either along Hillcrest or California Drive. Both of those alternatives end up very similar in cost. So their recommendation is that the city evaluate those further as in coordination with other CIP projects to potentially realize some cost sharing. Phase two has four separate areas, 2A through D. Each of those separate areas would require an additional pump station and tank to serve those locations as they're at higher elevations. As we then look at the specific demands and costs here for each of those phases, you'll see that the total demands are about 167,000 gallons per day for all four phases or all five phases. Once again, that's that small percentage compared to the city's overall demand that is has been deemed not cost effective for the city to serve. Once we've identified the average day demand, we've estimated the maximum day demand. This represents the peak usage during the summer when irrigation is at its max, and that's what the system overall needs to be able to supply. That reaches about 418,000 gallons per day. The total capital cost for the highway crossing, tanks, pump stations, all of these lines has been estimated at about $29.9 million for the distribution system. As you'll note, phase one is the majority of that cost, $24.8 million, which is still roughly about 80% of the overall cost in line with the overall demands. So now that we've identified the total amount of demand that we could expect to serve, that the city could expect to serve, take a look at where that recycled water supply would fit in the city's overall picture of water supply. What you'll see here is the city's projected water demand in red, which is from the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, which projects increased water demand up to 1,170 million gallons in 2045. As Rodora mentioned earlier, the city is solely dependent on water purchased from SFPUC, and that water supply is shown in blue here specifically for the worst dry year in a multiple year drought. As you'll see, that's projected to increase some over the years, but not in keeping with the city's overall demand. The supply deficit is noted there in those yellow markers, which would range from 9% up to 24% in 2045. That would be what would be expected to be conserved or met through other means in order to stay within that available supply. When we add in recycled water, though, the picture looks a little bit better. The recycled water shown in purple there decreases that supply deficit over those future years. Once recycled water is shown brought online here in 2030, the deficit would range from 4% up to 18%, which is a more reasonable number to potentially ask customers to conserve and is things that the city has requested already under that 20% mark. So the recycled water would help the city's supply be a little bit more resilient. One note to make is that this recycled water is based on those projected existing demands within the city. There could potentially be more recycled water supply available if there are additional demands identified. So in light of all that information, we've considered three main approaches for the distribution system, which are based on combinations of those different phases. The city could choose to move forward with phase one only and meet 80% of those demands, a single zone, you know, keep the pump and infrastructure a little more simple. They could choose to do phase one and 2D. 2D is over by Bayfront Park and has a relatively high demand with a limited amount of pipeline. It would be a good return on that investment. Or could proceed with planning on all of phase one and two, meaning, you know, 99% of the city's existing recycled water demands or irrigation demands. If that's the approach chosen, we would recommend constructing phase one first and then constructing each of those phases in phase two individually as other projects may happen in the area or as demands increase. In the table here, we've identified those three alternatives. Annual water supply ranges from 156 to 190 acre feet per year. The percent of potable demand offset would just range from 7% to 9%. And the capital costs in 2023 dollars would range from $24.8 million to $29.9 million. So with that, I will open it up to any questions, comments on the distribution system portion of this.
Questions from the council, comments for our consultant?
I'm happy for other council members to go. I do have a set, and then I do, I talked to staff and thank you staff for the time earlier today. I'm our Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency member, and I can't call myself a new timer because it's my 14th month. But my perspective on this is going to be long term and across climate resiliency categories. So I know that I've been told try to keep it simple, so I don't want to confuse council members until I hear their questions. And then how this fits to me in the much bigger picture of saltwater intrusion and soil collapse and fire prevention by maintaining healthy fire resistant plants to keep us more resilient to fire danger. So I see this as one part of a greater picture on that, and that's going to make life complicated. So I don't want to complicate things. Mayor, if others could go and then I'll add mine in.
Okay. Councilmember Cahalan and Councilmember Pappan, if you have any questions and comment for our consultant, go ahead. Ms. Pappan?
Okay, thank you. I see part of the structure that's anticipated goes down El Camino Real.
Yes.
Okay. So we have plans for El Camino Real and don't want to repeat disruptions. So is that part of this plan?
We have not at this point. That is a conceptual thing. We are certainly recommending that any development of those be done in conjunction with the city's existing plans. We totally understand that you don't want to tear up a street twice.
Yeah. We definitely want to keep efficiencies.
Yes, yes.
In addition to that, where I didn't see any reference to Caltrans, because we'll have to deal with them in this process.
So Caltrans would be a retail customer?
Oh yeah, you said that. Do we sell them water already? I guess that was my question.
I don't believe that we have a meter for Caltrans at this point in time.
Caltrans.
Yeah.
No meter means?
We don't sell water to them at this point in time.
How do they get water?
Well, I don't know for sure, but I don't think they have access to recycled or reclaimed water in this region. I think in Santa Clara County they do, but not in this region. So it would be a demand that's been identified. Yeah, that's been identified.
Well, I'm kind of curious because they do operate within our city. Are they getting free water or what's the story here?
We can double check, but I don't, I believe they bring in their own water trucks. I don't think they tie into our, if they do, or any contractor, whether it's public or private, we do issue them an encouragement permit, what's called a construction meter. And so they go to a fire hydrant, they connect the construction meter, we issue it, they bring it back and they pay for the water currently.
What about BART?
It'd be the same thing. BART's a water customer, so the water that's currently at the BART station, it is metered and they pay for their water.
Okay. Well, if we could examine that further, because they do have that big facility in Millbrae as well, so I can't imagine that they're just doing everything there by truck, trucking in water. So if we could look at that, that would be helpful.
Sorry, Councilor, are you talking about BART or are you talking about Caltrans?
I'm talking about Caltrans.
And I also wanted to point out that Caltrans is doing some projects on the freeway, improving the landscaping, so that's part of the demand that's shown in the study.
Right. I'm kind of curious here as to how they impact us presently moving into the future. I guess we don't seem to have that information.
Well, we can get back to you, but the demand was what, 9,000 gallons? I think you have, when you reached out to Caltrans.
It's an average, they'd be looking for an average of 3,000 gallons per day with a peak up to 9,000.
Definitely.
And that would be a new connection that hasn't specifically been identified of where they'd be looking to connect at this time.
Okay, so definitely, and you have an increased supply chart there. Is that from increased population or how does that number keep increasing?
Yes, that's based on increased population, planned growth and development within the city tied to the projections in the urban water management plan.
Okay, kind of a cost benefit here. This is a big investment, not saying we shouldn't or we should at this point in time, but it would be nice to know that we're trying to give our residents a break in the long term or something. You know, is it feasible for us to make an investment like this and what would be the benefit to the city overall? You do list the supply there, so that would be helpful, but I think the more benefit we get for that price tag would be beneficial and help us explain to the public as to what we may be getting into.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Just one thing comes to mind, I know there's parts of the city we've already been working to put in purple pipe. Is that a pretty small percentage compared to what we're looking at here of where we have purple pipe already?
It is, Councilmember. It is a very small percentage, actually.
Okay. And then in terms of the partnerships that you looked at and worked with, is that mostly as customers or is that as partner cities that are also looking at creating their own recycled water systems and finding shared sources of funding for that? Like what is the components of the partnerships?
Right now, we were looking at, so Burlingame, for instance, did a little study on potential recycled water demand within their service area. So I think very shortly they'll be looking at a project to study recycled water further. So they're kind of looking at their own also. And if they, if the region can develop a partnership, the chances for maximizing the benefits of recycled water and maximizing funding could be achieved. San Bruno is interested in recycled water. They have demands, but they just don't have the funding. They have concerns about the funding and a lot of cities do. The city does, the city of Millbrae does too. So the way to address that, one of the ways is to seek funding as a region. That just becomes very palatable for most funding agencies.
Hillsborough at one point wanted to partner with us. Is there any mention of Hillsborough in this process?
We did not reach out to Hillsborough because it is, it is kind of too far out there to make it economically feasible.
Ms. Cahalan, go ahead and finish.
Something along that line?
Just on the terms of Hillsborough, Hillsborough came to us a year, a year and a half ago. They want an additional piping system from the Tracy plant to them to maintain water pressure in Hillsborough. So that, at least on my eight years, I haven't heard them wanting to partner on this, but they do want, they wanted our help up that way, and it all has to do with water pressure.
Okay, Ms. Cahalan, you want to finish?
Yes. My last questions are just around the budget. On an earlier slide, it mentioned 2030. Is that kind of the anticipation of how many years it would take to build this out before we would be providing recycled water?
That was just the build out of, the anticipated build out of your city where we're projecting the, your maximum demands. And that comes from your urban water management plan.
Okay. I think to the point of when recycled water might be anticipated to come online, we're mostly using that as a point of comparison. It depends on how funding works out, how the city continues to move forward with the project, whether we're looking at doing the entire system or a portion of it. So that's the maximum that you could reach there. Obviously, it could scale back within that or extend out timeframe some.
And just a little bit more, so we have in essence, you know, depending on what phase, phase one and two, a $30 million price tag, right? And so the question is if we, and probably what we'd recommend is that we would issue bonds so we can, you know, get that revenue, build the infrastructure out and then pay the debt service out on those bonds. And so the question is, is there enough demand and enough revenue or savings to us? Because we spend just, I think on the fields alone, Sammy can help me out here, I think around $150,000 in water to irrigate just the sports fields. So we look at what we could save, you know, that's potable water versus the direct cost of reclaimed water. And then all this would add up and say, okay, is there enough demand, enough revenue to offset that bond payment on an annualized basis? And then, okay, then you answer that question, okay, it's cost beneficial. And then as a municipality, you hear me say all the time, there's intangibles, right, that we have to measure. It was brought up, you know, every, every year we have a drought, it seems like, and 20% cut, 30% cutback. This will actually, as the chart said and the analysis shows, very beneficial to our long-term health in terms of not using potable water and other resources. And I think, Mayor, you had mentioned, you know, the idea under building codes and having dual plum piping, and I think that's coming down the road. I know there's been discussions nationally for building codes and laws around that. So I think the timing is fantastic for us to, you know, talk about moving forward, how we move forward, you know, from a feasibility point of view. And so just a few more kind of economic type analysis, if the council is desirous to continue to move forward, that we can, we can bring that back.
Yeah, I'll have more to add to that, to that point, but I just want to make sure other council member has a chance to finish their questions and comment.
My last question was what funding sources we were looking for, so you answered that.
Yep, bond funding.
Okay, so this is largely to the public, if the public is watching us at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. What we talk a lot about at the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, or BASCA, is what we as the 26 wholesale customers, and for people of Millbrae, we're one of those 26 agencies, and because we're underneath this blanket, we're a senior, I want to make sure I'm using the right terminology, so correct me, we're a senior water right holder. But what has been happening in Sacramento during these last couple of droughts is the desire by Sacramento to give more control to the state water board. And part of that is to have more control over do the fish out in the Tuolumne or the Central Valley get the water or do we get water as senior water rights people? So part of this recycled water program is to give us some protection from some future activity of the state. Now, those pieces of legislation moved pretty far last year, but then got stopped, I think, in July. But we, as the city of Millbrae, we did write saying, please don't do anything to affect our senior water rights. So that's part of the stage. The other part of the stage right now is, and I should have done more homework, right now I believe SFPUC is currently working with the city of Daly City for recycled water. Daly City has a couple of other unique problems that that's solving, but it's also very close to San Francisco. And when I've asked, because I'm on the policy committee also for BASCA, if we do recycling, does that mean that anybody will say, oh, then we can take some of your potable water? So that's clear, we cannot, they cannot touch our potable water. And the city manager reminds me, every BASCA meeting, do not give up our water rights. So just know that's been our platform here. But that said, so Daly City's off working on that. San Bruno uses groundwater and has always done that, and I'm hoping part of our East Side Plan will include working with San Bruno to help restore the aquifer, which also sits under us. If you collapse an aquifer, we start having soil subsidence and we have buildings and roads that fall apart. Oversimplification, but that's what happens. Again, I'm setting the stage for why all this fits together. And then in addition, Burlingame just received, I believe, a million dollar grant, can't remember the source, to begin to investigate recycled water, which leads us to this other thing that Gina will love hearing about. During the rains of last winter, so 2023, we had enough purified water at our plant, we could not get rid of it because Burlingame has priority over the pipeline that we share. So Burlingame sewer plant, their pipeline, our pipeline, they get first dibs on the water. We couldn't get rid of that water. The end result is that increases our chances of having sanitary sewer, sewer overflows, shades of Bay Keepers on that. So to me, I'm looking, and that bothered me, and I actually talked to the city manager during the floods last year, should we tell people to stop having showers, stop washing your clothes, stop doing anything that's adding water to our sewer system because we can get fined for sewer, sanitary sewer overflows? This system, this recycled water system, will give us tank capacity, will give us capacity to handle this, and we will no longer be subservient, and I mean that word deliberately, subservient to Burlingame when we have to move treated water on that. And that could save us from getting sued. I'm really glad Bay Keeper never sprung their head up last year because we did have SSOs last year. So that's kind of setting the stage. Burlingame is looking at recycled water. We are not good at getting grants. So you've got a city next door that's very good at getting funded and we are not. So taking more time to decide about this, when we're ready to go, this is our opportunity to get ready to go on this.
So, Ms. Mayor, for the record, on that, that was an emergency situation. We did all of the reporting, so there's no issue there. We're legally compliant, just so you know.
Yeah, and that's great. I'm great. But I mean, I really was, should we stop taking showers when that mataring was coming down and it's all ending up at the plant? So that's kind of where I am. I have a couple of tiny questions, although I found it later in the presentation, well, I found it later in another agenda item. I would love for you to come back and show us what the four pressure zones are because I think that will help the public understand what we're talking about on that. Plus, also I'm a geographer, so maps are always good. Cappuccino High School in San Bruno, but all of their utilities are us. Are they included as one of the water users?
They are not identified for one of the water users at this point. They were included in the overall demands from San Bruno, should San Bruno look to partner with them. So that could certainly be something that is looked into as part of this. However, I believe their location is also a little farther distant, so that would probably require some investment from San Bruno.
A lateral coming off.
A lateral coming off that would allow them.
Okay. In the future.
Well, they're right along the phase 2A.
Yeah, be phase, phase 2A extending towards the.
Okay. I just, I think we should probably be working with the school district saying, we cover your utilities, be a partner with us on that. So that's an additional idea to throw out there. Drought proof. I did have a discussion this morning with the head of BASCA, with Nicole Sankula, and just wanted to encourage us to think that this is both achieving our environmental needs as a city, something we don't really talk about in depth, and it is a big part of our drought resiliency plan on that. And something that we're only beginning to talk about at emergency services, which is the need to convert plants along our WUEs, our Wildland Urban Interfaces, to be plants that have a higher water content. But that means we've got to water them. And what I have seen in every drought, having been here since I was in fifth grade, Millbrae, we're very conscious, the price goes up, SFPUC raises the prices, our yards die. And worse, our trees die. So I look at this as a way to keep our trees alive. And I agree completely with Councilwoman Pappan. It was my first thought too, we darn well better have that pipe running down the middle of El Camino Real, regardless of whether we can connect up. I had another question. Sarah Station was supposed to get the piping underneath the railroad tracks, so from the Gateway Project to the railroad tracks, that right now is on hold because of high speed rail?
Correct.
Okay, so let's make sure that's in big bold letters, that we're trying to do the right thing, but we are being held back by state agencies. That was Angie's population. Please, go ahead.
If I may, through the chair. This seems like a perfect opportunity for public-private partnerships. The Green Hills Country Club, for instance, why are we suggesting to take on the entire burden without bringing people along?
Definitely something that we could be looking into. I mean, you know, we do public-private partnerships with solar, you know, all these redoable courses. So it's something that we can look into.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we just haven't been there yet, right? So the timing of this is to present this, the feasibility study, you know, does it work to answer the question of the cost benefit? And so we're just, we're just not there to, to approach anyone. Now, we have on private development projects and some infrastructure projects knowing, like for example, the repaving of Lincoln Circle. We put purple pipe under the ground because we know that that can connect to Richmond Drive, which is a main artery for reclaimed water. So we've been doing some undergrounding on a project by project basis, conditioning private development projects in this area to, to put in purple pipe in anticipation.
Well, yeah, somehow conversations have already occurred in that realm. I know with the mayor of Burlingame is a member at Green Hills Country Club, and I think our One Shoreline is also a possible partner in some of this. So it would be nice if we included in future presentations the possibility of public-private partnerships, because I know they are interested in that, and also a partnership with One Shoreline. I don't know how that works. I'm just saying I've heard the conversations have been going on that may provide us with some additional funding for something like this. So I would hope that we include that in future presentations. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm what Gina was saying. I spoke with staff from One Shoreline in December and they were talking about similar recycled water projects. So I don't know how far along they are in that, but they were looking at the region and especially golf courses.
Yeah, I think they're very interested.
Yeah, well, now we know a price, so now we can approach them. And that's kind of what we were waiting for.
As someone who attends every One Shoreline board meeting, I haven't heard that. And in fact, their plan of building a wall to me will take away our grant writing ability because they'll say, ah, sea level rise is taken care of, and the work that we need to do at the High Line Canal and moving water, storm water back and forth, it'll be more difficult for us given One Shoreline. So I have never heard them talk about the desire to get into recycled water. And clearly, the plan they have for Millbrae and Burlingame takes into zero account of storm water floods on that. So I just disagree on that one. My other, other questions, and this is back to Councilwoman Pappan, I too tried to read this and say, where would our residents see a benefit? Because from them, they see, they don't understand that council never raised the rates as SFPUC was raising the rates. And then they get hit by a big rate increase and they're angry and I understand that. And yet bottled water sells for about $8 a gallon. And yet bottled water sells for about $8 a gallon. So it's relative when you look at that. But the savings here is that the city could reduce some of our own costs, will have a revenue stream, and that money would come back into the Water Enterprise Fund? Where would that money come? So would we be able, then, to subsidize low-rent, low-way, I'm sorry, low-income households? If we had a savings in there, how would it come back and help the average Millbrae resident?
When we get to that point, the cost of reclaimed water is cheaper than potable water. I don't know, we probably maybe a third of the cost? Quarter of the cost? Half the cost?
You mean at a retail level?
At a retail level. Maybe half the cost. But so that's where the savings would come in, right? So the water usage, and then overall, it would assist us. If we get here, to answer your question, I hate to go on the public record on this, then maybe we can look at providing our potable water to other municipalities like San Jose that may need it or something, but not until we are secure in our abilities. So those are the benefits. I talked about some of the intangibles and things like that, that they're definitely there.
Okay.
Can we service a bond and stay afloat, right, at 30 million and get enough revenue and cost savings?
I think it would help us, and it would help the public understand, if we do, the next time you come back to us, you do a little bit more work in that direction. And see, maybe it's a flow chart, and it shows if this, then that, you know, whatever it is, because most of them are still just so angry at us.
Well, we wanted, again, I mean, there's obviously a lot of communication and stuff, but we wanted to get this to the council in this study session first and foremost, to inform all of you at the same time, hey, this is what we're looking at, this is what it looks like, here's the cost, here's, you know, the timing, the phasing, and get concurrence from all of you, and then we can take it to the next step.
So, and along, then I had a quick question. We talk about MFD, sorry, multifamily dwelling customers. Exactly what would they be using the recycled water for? Because there's not a lot of landscaping at them.
Some of the larger complexes specifically, those are the ones that have some large irrigation areas.
Okay, so it's landscaping.
Really the larger, it's landscaping.
Yeah, I looked at that one, and I said, yeah.
No, it's landscaping, but some of the, you know, much larger complexes have demand sufficient that it would.
And I think this is my last one. Oh, go ahead.
And I wanted to add to that. One of the options that's feasible, and it's been used in other municipalities, is using recycled water to flush toilets. So that's, you know, there's, there are operational costs associated with that, but it is an option.
So we have two parks that hopefully we're going to have enough money to rebuild, and neither of them have bathrooms, because they're neighborhood parks as opposed to regional. But if they did get their bathrooms, would we make sure that those bathrooms are using recycled water once we have it? Or at least they'll be piped for it so that we can do it? I'm seeing Sam shaking his head. Okay. And then, no, I'm sorry, I had one more. It just dawned on me. This is going to sound really weird, and it's from my soil studies that were 40 years ago, so I'm a little rusty. My concern with these continual droughts is that the soil structure itself begins to collapse, and then it cannot maintain water, it can't absorb water. And one of the things that we need to do to keep us safe from fires is to make sure that we're keeping our soils not completely dried out, that they lose their structure on that. So to the public, I know you will not understand this, it's something that those of us in my field, more so, the soil scientists, got into this, but this is a way of protecting us from stormwater. If your soil can't absorb stormwater, it's going to run downhill, we're going to have more floods. So if we can keep water at the top of the hill, if we can keep our residential homes landscaped with water, our soils are in better shape, and they can better handle all the functions that soil give us as humans and animals on that. And I know that sounds very trippy hippie-ish. I wish you guys could put that in a term that the public can understand, because I'm still trying to grapple how to explain it. It's like, you've got clay, you've got sand, and you've got spaces in there, and water attaches. When it collapses, there's no place for water to attach. It runs downhill. That's my simplest explanation. So all of these things fit into each other on that, and it's a reason why we should be moving now. So of course, and the mayor hasn't spoken yet, but I'm all for alternate, alternative two on that.
Okay, all right. Ms. Kehl, do you have anything else?
Okay, thank you. So I think you've discussed this a moment ago, but I'm just trying to get some clarification on that, because I'm sure there's been discussing the previous slides. What is the expectation of the recycled water production versus the current portable water usage in terms of a percentage comparison?
So.
Peak production?
Oh, peak production compared to, I'm going to talk a little bit about peak production when we turn it over to Catherine. She's going to go through the treatment side of things and the treatment system, so I will.
Should I wait?
Yes. So let's wait on that one. She'll touch on the peak production of the plant.
So, and I certainly think, obviously, you touched on the discussion of regional partnership, and I certainly believe that's beneficial if we have excess that we can produce, that we don't use all of them domestically, you know, localized way. You know, being able to export it to a different city and have that, for lack of a better word, become a commodity, right? Would certainly be beneficial, but I think we can first consider a more localized distribution to start with a broader use of this recycled water example. Car wash. We do have a successful car wash in our city, an automobile manufacturer as well. So industrial use, think along those lines, where they're not, they're currently using portable water, but they can move into recycled water relatively easily, provided that the facility and the distribution is available. Other industrial use, you know, we can sit here for five hours and keep coming up with industrial use of it. Dual plumbing, we've discussed this multiple times on newer multi-residential and mixed-use and commercial building possibly, for urinal and toilets and some of the others that are non-portable use, can certainly be a good potential usage for that. Construction cleanup. All these constructions that we have in the city, all the new developments that is in the city, they're ordering water truck just to, you know, just to wash the construction site. And they could also be used, be using recycled water for their purposes. Another one that we have not touched on, fire prevention, you know, sprinklers and fire hydrants. I think right now they're tied into our portable water system. Certainly, I believe that at least in the commercial district downtown, newer development area, where these fire hydrants can in the future be tied into recycled water. So when we come down to doing fire preventions and fire sprinklers, they can all be using this recycled water. So this is just, you know, in the last 10 minutes or so, I just kind of come up with this, and I'm sure as we move forward, we come up with more probable use for this recycled water. You know, we need to certainly think about a procedure of metering the use of these recycled water on a per-user basis, and come up with some sort of a pricing scheme, right? Because it is a commodity. And the revenue expectation, we need to have some sort of an expectation on the revenue, so that that could be the funding source to repay the bonding liability. And that also could, you know, over time, hopefully, as it pays down the bonding interest, it will become a revenue, going back to the enterprise account, and therefore lowering the water bill for every single one of our residents, which is something that they've been asking for time and time and time and time and time again. I can say that 15 times. So I think this could be the real solution to lowering everybody's water bill in the long run. So from a proposal standpoint, I think, I would imagine the most user would be new mixed-use residential and commercial development and businesses, which is along downtown and ease of El Camino Real. Some of the major accounts such as Green Hill and School Districts as well, where they have big landscaping and irrigation needs. So focusing our proposal in terms of distribution along these area. Up the hill, not so much, because they're mostly single-family homes and more existing and established neighborhood. You know, the cost benefit may not be there just yet. So focusing our distribution on major accounts and newer development and newer opportunities would most likely get us the most bang for our buck, for lack of better words. But that's kind of what I have so far, and I'm happy to listen to Catherine. So I've got a couple of follow-up here before we move on to the consultant.
Thank you, Mayor. Loved everything the mayor said. Mills High School is right on this pipeline, and granted, they put in fake grass everywhere, but they're still going to learn to have to replace that. Why, we should get Mills High School into this.
I believe they were playing.
Well, the pipe is there, but they're not in the distribution system map. That's the only map I'm looking at.
That, I believe.
Okay, if it's there, just when the mayor mentioned.
Yeah, we mentioned they'd come back for detail later.
Yeah.
Okay. I had a question, though. This is, disinfected water in terms of sprinkler systems, is that a legal use, because it's going to aerosolize? And I don't know the answer. Just something to think about.
It's kind of an engineering question. Perhaps something the DBW can come back with some study on it?
I know this is a shocker, but I was adhering the headlights on that one, so I know for the engineer.
Okay, and then.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I forgot, we missed a whole other reason for why one should do alternate one versus two, and that's load into the bay and red tides, which are, they're already predicting more red tides for this summer on that.
So let's, let's let Catherine present the treatment options, and then we can talk about that.
Oh, I haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
I'm there.
All right, so before we get there, Ms. Pappin, do you have anything?
Catherine over.
One final follow-up on the mayor's ideas here, too. Long-term, you know, paying down a bond and everything like that, and if we want to benefit our community and our residents, we should look at reinvesting in our infrastructure, because part of the reason our bills are so high are broken water pipes in other areas. So it would benefit our community if we were to raise revenue, or not raise it, but gain a revenue stream from this. I do believe we should consider reinvesting to improve our system overall. So I'm ready for the next part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappin. Go ahead.
I will turn it over to Catherine. I'll be here to walk through the slides for her, but turn it over to Catherine. Let me get to your slides, Catherine. We can't hear you right now, Catherine. You tested the audio earlier.
Try that now. How about now?
There we go.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, well, good evening, city council members, and Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to be here today to talk about the treatment plant, part of this work. So in line with what Bonnie was saying with respect to the demands, and for the treatment facility, we want to design that effectively for peak day demand. And then everything sort of above that peak hour gets attenuated and dealt with through the distribution system and the storage facility. So what we looked at was laying out the treatment plant in a way that it can be expandable. So initially, about a 400,000 gallon per day or 4 million gallon day treatment facility, which effectively covers all of those phase one and phase two demands. And then, but laying it out so that it could be doubled up to 0.8 MGB, and that would basically allow the city to bring in those regional partners. And then ultimately, considering a layout that somewhere down the road, maybe it could go even as high as 1.6 million gallons per day, where that would be, you know, not demands that have been identified to date, but, you know, as we, you know, as we were just talking about, some of these newer opportunities come along down the road, we want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves from a space and footprint standpoint. So that's what the study did, is looked at the ability to go all the way up to about 1.6. Next slide. So we were just talking about the red tide and the impact of nutrients in the discharge to the bay. And that's been a major issue for the San Francisco Bay now for a while, and the regional board has identified a need to start regulating discharges to the bay, the nutrient discharge loads. And there's been, you know, from a, from a nutrient discharge standpoint and a regulatory standpoint, there's sort of two different ways that that could be regulated. You could regulate that as a concentration-based limit, and what that means is that the affluent, the discharge from the treatment plant has to meet a specific water quality all the time, or even if it's just seasonally. And so with that, the city would basically have to treat every single drop of water that comes into the wastewater treatment plant to remove nutrients, and specifically nitrogen is a big concern. The city is part of the BACWA organization, which helps sort of support all the regional, all the Bay Area dischargers with respect to regulatory compliance. And when these issues related to nutrient limits came out, now almost eight years ago, first came out, BACWA completed a study for all of the dischargers in the bay to identify what strategies are available. And that study identified for the city's plant, the best approach would be if there was a concentration-based limit, would be that the city constructs a membrane bioreactor treatment plant. And the reason that would be a requirement for the city is because of the way your treatment plant is, it's a pretty small area where your facility is, you know, you're confined, you've got the bay on one side, you've got the highway on the other, you've got the airport on another. So there's not a lot of room for expansion. And an MBR, membrane bioreactor treatment plant, is a very compact and small footprint. So likely, that would be the only approach that the city could use if you had to meet a concentration-based limit. Now, a load reduction-based limit approach, that's a little different, where instead of saying, oh, every single drop that leaves the treatment plant needs to have a certain concentration, is the load limit would just mean you need to reduce those loads. You need to reduce the total load of nitrogen that you're discharging to the bay. And so that could be achieved by lowering the concentration of nitrogen in the wastewater or reducing the flow of wastewater. And so just by implementing a recycled water project, you will be effectively reducing your loads discharged to the bay. And under that approach, a less robust treatment plant would be needed in terms of recycled water treatment, because effectively, you're just providing the water, you're providing the level of treatment needed just to produce recycled water. So we're going to be talking about two different approaches to treating recycled water. One that relies on a membrane treatment system that would allow you to kind of transition in the future to an MBR treatment system, and one that is really just more focused on the lowest-cost approach to treating recycled water, which is the cloth disc approach. And that would lend itself with a load-based reduction requirement. Now, in terms of where we are in the bay and where we are with limits, right now, the regional board is only talking about load reduction limits. The permit, the next cycle permit that's going to be coming out this year has already identified load reduction limits that are going to be needed. It appears that Millbrae falls under the bar as a smaller discharger, that you probably will not be required to do at least initially in this round some load-based reductions. But it doesn't mean it's not a good idea to do it and to move in that direction. And more so, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. If we continue to see these algae blooms and fish kills that we saw in the last few years, and the load reductions that are being called for in 2024 don't get us there, in 10, 15, 20 years down the road, those concentration-based limits could become a reality. And so right now, the city's kind of in a unique position of, we don't know what the future holds, but we need to make a decision today about our treatment plant. So next slide, I'm going to walk a little bit through then what the difference is between these two facilities and sort of the decision that would need to be made. Next slide. There we go. Okay. So with the cloth disc filter approach, this would be a, like I said, with the cloth disc filters, that's sort of the lowest-cost approach to treating recycled water. And basically, you would build, you can see it's a very small footprint, and then you have the north part of the site there, you've got the disc filters and a pump station, and it's a pretty small filtration facility. And that layout there can treat up to that 1.6 million gallons a day of flow. From there, it would go through a dedicated UV, it says UV disinfection system, that's an ultraviolet disinfection system, that actually provides a very high level of disinfection that's required for recycled water. And then from there, being pumped through the tertiary EFL pump station and into the distribution system that Bonnie and Rodora were just talking about. And so this approach, if we're not facing nutrient limits and the future potential concentration-based limits, would be the most logical approach for the city. And this comes with an estimated capital cost of about $8.9 million, and then an estimated 25-year O&amp;M of $7.1 million. And a lot of that cost is. of 7.1 million. And a lot of that cost is, you know, tied up actually in the UV system and the energy costs and things associated with that. The disc filters themselves have a very low operating cost. The next slide. The disadvantage of the cloth disc filter approach is if that concentration based limit comes down the road. Because what would happen then is the city would have to convert the treatment plant to an MBR plant. This slide shows what that MBR plant footprint looks like. So as part of this study, we basically took the work that was done in the Bakwa study, took a little bit of a deeper look at like, what would really the city need to do for an MBR plant? And we would say that the entire, you know, existing, you know, based on the work we did, that, you know, the, the entire existing footprint of the treatment plant, the sort of green boxes that are on the lower left-hand side of the, of the figure here, that would become your biological treatment system, where you're removing the nitrogen. And then from there, it would flow into the membrane filters, which are the large green box along the north side of this figure. And the reason those membranes are so big is because they have to be sized to handle that really high flow. So a little bit earlier, we were talking about the peak flows through the plant and how when it's raining and you get all that INI infiltration in the collection system, you get flows running through the plant that are like 10 times higher than what comes in on the middle of summer on a dry weather day. So those membranes, for that concentration based limit, have to be, it's a very large system. And so effectively, what you would do is all that infrastructure that you built for the cloth disc filter would have to be removed to and be replaced with the membranes. So there's a risk, if you build a cloth disc filter system now, a lower cost system now, that in the future, this concentration based limit's going to come down the pipe, and now you have to meet that, and now all those facilities have to be pulled out and then replaced with the membrane filters. The next So an alternative way then to approach this would be, let's go ahead and build membrane filters now that could be used for a future MBR. That way, you're not building something that is potentially becomes obsolete, and you're making some investment towards that future nutrient removal possibility. And so you can see the membrane filter layout there, it's a much larger footprint than the cloth disc filter. But again, the layout of these membrane filters is set up in a way that they could be easily expandable for a future MBR. So they're designed in a very, you know, kind of a, intentionally in a way to be expandable. But that comes at a higher cost. And so you can see that estimated capital cost is about 17.9 million dollars. And the 25-year life cycle is about $2 million more than the cloth disc. And that differential on that O&amp;M is really that extra operating cost of the filter system, because the membrane system also has a higher energy demand than the cloth disc filter system. So most of those, that differential in O&amp;M is energy usage. So the next slide. But the nice thing about this now is that you've invested in infrastructure that is easily expandable to this future MBR. You're not throwing away facilities. There would be, you know, the influent pump station that would become obsolete, because you would be replacing that with a pump station that would be located within the, within the aeration basins, the reactors where you're removing the nitrogen. But the rest of the system would be, remain in place and be usable as part of that future treatment, treatment plant. So the next slide. So thinking about this and making this decision, I said, it really does come down to a risk based decision. With the, kind of just repeating what I just said, the cloth disc filters, if you have those concentration based limits in the future, you'd have to abandon the filters, the polymer addition, and the influent pump station. But in the near term, you're, you're dealing with a lower operating cost. If you built membrane filters first, and you had a concentration based limit in the future, you would, there would be some influence screening and pump station that would have to be removed, but not nearly as much infrastructure that would have to be removed as with the cloth disc filter approach. And of course, in the near term, you're dealing with a higher cost. So the, basically, the cloth disc filter approach, it could result in the need to abandon facilities prior to when those facilities reach their useful life. So like a cloth disc system, it might have a useful life of, say, 25 to 30 years before you would have to do major rehab or maybe replace some of that equipment. Well, if concentration based limits were to come into play in, say, 10 or 15 years, you may be abandoning that facility before you've gotten its full use. So the analysis we did said that if those nutrient limits are 15 or more years out, it would probably be more cost effective, even if you had to abandon the cloth disc filters, to go ahead and, just when considering the recycled water facilities, to go ahead and do cloth disc now. That being said, the membrane approach, even if, if concentration limits are ever in your future, you've made an investment. So what you would be doing if you went with the membrane approach would be, you would be reducing that cost of that future nutrient removal. Whereas with cloth disc filter, you're not reducing any future costs. So again, it's sort of like a, a risk based decision of, if we spend a little bit more money now, we're, we're offsetting a potential future cost, and maybe overall, this will be a lower cost infrastructure. But we really do not know if and when those concentration based limits are going to come into play. And in particular for Millbrae, because you're a smaller discharger, and the amount of nutrient loads you contribute to the bay compared to many of the larger cities around you is so small, that there is a chance that you will never see concentration based limits, not in 25 or even 30 years. And we just don't know the answer to that question. And that, that's, that is the challenge here with making this decision. The next slide. So thinking about these two approaches, when you combine the, the cost of the distribution system, which we talked about, and the treatment system, and we look at a total 25-year present value cost, with cloth disc, it's a 45 to 50 million dollar project, with membrane, that's about 10 million more, 57 to 62. And then the cost per acre foot of water is in either the 10 to 11,000 range, or about 13 to 14,000 over that 25-year life. I think with that, we will open it now for some discussion of the preferred treatment approach. So, you know, again, this is a risk based decision the city will need to make. The timeline and need for future removal is truly unknown. The regional board has indicated that concentration based limits, if they do occur, are likely 10 to 20 years out. They're going to be, starting with more of a load reduction approach, which you will achieve with this recycled water project regardless of the filtration technology you choose. But I think the real kind of, I think, selling point on the membrane filters is that investment in the future. And maybe even the potential for, you know, getting funding now to support this project that might offset some of the future nutrient removal costs, which probably will not be available, any kind of grant or loan, you know, any grant funding at all for that. So with that, I guess I would just open it up for questions or discussion about these two approaches. And I think if we are, my understanding is like, we don't need to necessarily make a decision today, but if the council is ready to, to talk about this and make a decision, that would, you know, kind of be documented in the report. Maybe there's one more slide here.
I think this is, this is it for the discussion, the treatment approach, and then we'll move into wrapping things up.
Got it. Thank you.
So.
So with that, I've taken questions you guys have, yes.
So to me, this discussion is more technical and engineering focused in terms of compliance and what we need to do in terms of engineering planning, based on the anticipation of future compliance, right, and obviously cost as well. So I, I would imagine unless everybody else have questions, I'd like our director to kind of give us some guidance on this. Ms. Schneider, you have questions?
Two questions. Two questions for Ms. Geis. So all of this is based on nutrient flow into the bay in a changing world. But we know our population is projected to go from 23,000 to 27,000 to 28,000. But the Bay Area wide population growth is expected to go much higher. Every added person is more nutrient flow into the bay. So I hear you saying, small cities, we may not have to care for that. I don't believe that. I'm on the other side, saying that they're going to have to expect every city to reduce that load with an ever growing population. I'm seeing you shaking your head, so that's kind of where I am. I was sitting here trying to think, in my field, 40 years trying to get people to recycle, and they still don't do it right, how we are going to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus, which I think mainly comes from soaps, I just don't see it happening in terms of reducing the load from point, source point on that. So just my comments on, on that.
Okay. So can we hear from the director?
Yes, yes, Mayor. So, you know, when it, when it comes down to this preferred treatment approach, whether it's the cloth disc filters or the membrane filters, it, it boils down to the cost and what do, are we, what is our goal in, in the future, right?
Right.
So not knowing that, not knowing the nutrient removal requirement yet, you know, does, we, our, the way that we're looking at it is, you know, do we, would, would we like to put the investment into the MBR alternative? And, and there are environmental, you know, there are environmental impacts, positive impacts, if we go in that route. So, you know, and as Catherine had discussed, you know, there, you know, when it comes to these red tides that are trying to become prevalent, you know, does the city want to be very proactive in that sense, and, and, hey, do our part and, and, you know, putting the investment into the MBR? So.
But there's, there's a greater question is that, you know, between the two approach, there need to be an analysis of the ongoing operating cost of harvesting and producing these recycled water, based on these two approaches. I mean, at the end of the day, we need to look at it from a fiscal perspective, which one makes sense for us to move forward with. We, obviously, we want to do the best we can, the most, the cleanest and the most advanced system possible, to the extent that it makes sense for us to afford it. So there need to be a consideration to that as well. We need to be practical to that. So I, I guess the staff can help, perhaps maybe give us some guidance on.
Right.
The cost of the operating these two models, and how it would mean to us from a fiscal perspective.
And Catherine, would you be able to give that answer?
Yeah, well, if you go back, if you go back one slide. Yeah, so this slide here basically demonstrates the difference between those costs. So either of these projects, without any, you know, grant funding support, have a pretty high cost per acre foot of water compared to potable water, the $10,000 per acre foot with cloth disc, and then you're adding, you know, another, you know, almost 30% on top of that, if you go with the membrane filter approach. So it is not an insignificant difference in cost. And this represents the 25-year, this is both capital and operating cost of the system. So the cloth disc does provide a much, a much lower overall cost of producing this recycled water. It, I think the benefit, which can't be quantified too well, though, is again, that if those concentration based limits come down, this, some of this capital cost that you have put into the membrane system, that effectively reduces that future nutrient removal cost for you. Whereas the cloth disc does not provide that benefit. So it's, it would be an investment in a, in a future treatment system if you went, if you spent that extra money. You'd have to almost look at those extra dollars as that investment, not necessarily as the recycled water added cost, if that makes sense.
It would be helpful if we can get, for example, cost per gallon, maybe, you know, that would be more of a, because I, I'm sure the cost per acre foot per year, there, there's some relationship to that. But for us who are not dealing with this on a yearly, on a daily basis, you know, simple term might be helpful. Is there a correlation to cost per gallon, for example? And then we'll get to a couple of council member after.
Yeah. I don't know if, if Rodora or Bonnie can calculate that on the fly here or not, but we can definitely provide those numbers. I don't know if, or, or if somebody within the city knows, for example, how much you guys currently pay per acre foot of potable water, to provide a comparison to this number.
We, we can certainly calculate that. We did, we have previously calculated, it ends up in very small, when we look at a per gallon basis, they end up in very small.
Or per thousand gallons.
Yeah, portions of cents. So we can, we can certainly do that for future presentations.
Just for, how many gallons are in an acre? But.
There are 300 and approximately 360,000 gallons in one acre foot.
And, and the way we buy water, Mayor and the council, is by HCF, which I think there's 764 gallons in, in a HCF, and we pay, Sam, what do you pay? Six dollars and, six dollars and 50 cents or so. We'll, we'll get it to you, but just to, just to help you a little bit there, Mayor, on, on terms of Bonnie. So it's, you know, point 002 cents.
Would, would just be nice to have some comparison there.
Yeah.
We got, yeah, we got about nine minutes left. I want to get to Ms. Cahalan and then Ms. Schneider.
With the membrane filters, does that increase the quality of the recycled water we're getting so that over time, we could use that recycled water for more things?
Yeah, that is a good, that is a good point. The, the membrane filter is a higher quality of water. And so if you were to, for example, look at direct potable reuse, so like using the water for higher quality use, the next step after the membrane would be, or the next step after the system would be a, essentially a reverse osmosis treatment process that is required to go to direct potable reuse. And so the membrane filter does lend itself for that future, whereas the cloth disc filter does not. You would have to have a separate membrane treatment step after the cloth disc filter and then the RO. So that is a, that's a really great point, that, that would be another value with the membrane system.
All right, council member. Schneider.
In terms of potentially getting grant funding, it always helps if you're one of the first. How many, at least in the peninsula or San Mateo County or the region, how many places are going towards membrane, I lost it, and a BNR, MBR system? If you could come back with us and show us where this sits and compares to other communities on that? Because if we're close to first out the gate, I think that improves our chances of getting the funding for it. And especially with what Councilwoman Cahalan brought up, the flexibility, the ability to more immediately get it. If we go into a 10-year drought, then finding more human potable water is, is a valid concern. So that's a really good point.
Okay, all right. Ms. Papen, you have anything? You good? Okay. Anything, go ahead. Catherine, you have anything?
Uh, no, no, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. So without that, Director Pastista, you have anything else for us? I'd like to adjourn this, because I have a 7:00 PM.
So I just wanted to close this out by talking about the next steps will be incorporating the city council's preferred project in the study. And, and that study will be finalized and submitted to both the city and the state. It could be used as a basis for funding applications and future design of treatment plant and your pipelines. And then also, I just, before we sign off, I'd like to express my appreciation for city staff, Tom Williams and San Batista and Craig Centus, who have all provided their vision and guidance for this project. And we really appreciate that. Their input were really valuable. And so I, I just wanted to mention that before we keep moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam, what decision do you want us to make tonight?
Well, I think we've heard some comments, and we're going to, what we'll do is we'll, when we come back to you, we'll craft the, the document in such a way so that we, we could provide you more information, so that when we get to a point of, you know, implementing the project, we have a roadmap of as to what options we could give the council for discussion and direction.
I just want to make sure, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I was gonna say, Mayor, to help out here. So I, I mean, I think there's a lot of information. I, I don't think it's fair for the council to make a decision tonight, because we owe you more information. One of the things, not only from the engineering, technical side of it, is we'll run an analysis on a bond issue on both scenarios with a revenue stream.
Yes.
And then bring that back to the council and say, okay, you know, here's. -and then bring that back to the council and say, okay, you know, here's, here's kind of where we, where we land on that.
Because, because what I'm, because what I'm he- Okay. One second.
Pros and cons, obviously, to-
Because I want to be able to, I want to be able to close out tonight, giving you enough information to go on to the next step, because if the goal sounds like, which is to try, uh, to put together a grant funding application package, I want to make sure you have all the direction you need tonight in order to move forward with that. And then after that, we have Ms. Papin to have some comments.
Uh, yes, so, just so we're not recreating the wheel here, and thank you all for all your efforts here. Uh, I sit on the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee, and they have done similar programs, I believe there was one in Palo Alto. So if you could just reach out to them for, they had a good presentation on that. Now, it's completely, you know, but we may be able to gain some information that would be helpful. Uh, there was a golf course out there, they were using recycled water and distributing it throughout. I'm seeing a lot of heads nod. Um, so just again, as a resource as we progress here, uh, and that golf course really became a partner with the city, so please take a look. Thank you.
All right. Sam, do you have everything you need tonight?
Yeah.
You got everything? Consultant, you got everything you need? Perfect. Sounds good. Anything else? Okay. Um, I will adjourn to special meeting, come back. Um, I think we've taken fif- yeah, 15 minutes? How about 7:10?
All right. And I also like to thank, uh, all the consulting team and Sam for the great work and Craig Centus as well, so.
Yeah. Thank you for the consulting team and the entire DBW team as well. Thank you so much. We'll be back at 7:10.